I'd like to call the meeting to order if we could stand for the pledge, please. Kim, are you all set with roll call?
Yes, I am.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make a statement before we move on in the agenda that prior to tonight's meeting, the Board of Education hosted a reception for all the teachers and staff who are receiving tenure, and we'd like to publicly congratulate them for receiving this designation and thank them for all the good work they're doing for our students in the district, and that we look forward to having them for a lengthy time to help our students strive to be the best that they can be. Okay. Moving on to approval, the agenda resolved that the Board of Education approved the agenda for the April 18th, 2022 Regular Board of Education Meeting. Can I motion, please? Brian first. Second, Joan. All in favor? Oppose? Passes seven zero. We're going to move on to the Board of Education Spotlight. We have a nice treat this evening. Superintendent Thompson?
Yes, and I believe I overheard Sarah Buckshot say, "This is the first time we've done a performance at a board meeting in," was it three years, Sarah?
Like two and a half.
Two and a half. So, this is a very special treat, and I would like to, there'll be a performance from our musical, Mary Poppins, Morgan Coffey, who is Mary Poppins, and Emily Garcia, the Bird Woman, will perform the song Feed the Birds. So, without further ado, take it away.
That was fantastic. Thank you so much for sharing with us this evening. The talent of our students is truly amazing, and I know after tonight's, this is going to be a fantastic performance by the students. The show is May 6th and 7th, and you can get the tickets on beagletheater.com. All right, next we move on to the next part of the agenda, the Correspondence Board Activities and Committee Reports. And on Wednesday, April 6th, the Board of Education and Superintendent Thompson had a building visit during the daytime with McNamara Elementary. Does anyone have anything that they would like to report out on about that visit?
It was a lot of fun. Oh, hi, Mrs. Homeyer. How are you? It was great to get in that building and, again, seeing the learning spaces with the students in there, but it was a nice, I felt so welcome. Like, the Board of Education, we'd walk into the classrooms and student would come up and introduce themselves, and they were so engaged in what they're doing, but they wanted us to be by their side and explain what they were doing as well, which was amazing. It really was a great experience, and we appreciated the time getting those tours.
Just wanted to add that when, what Janet said, going into the classroom, there was a science class, or the teacher was teaching science, and they had maps out, and the kids were so excited to show us what they were doing and how were they figuring it out. It was, just like Jen said, you were very welcome to all of us, and we truly appreciate it and all the good work that everyone does there. It was great to be there. Thank you.
And then that same evening, there was an OC and BOC's annual meeting. Joan?
I had to run me. That was a separate meeting, so whoever attended is supposed to report on it. So, I think that leaves you and you, not you, Denise. Matt?
I can do it. Joan actually ran the meeting, and she did a really nice job. Every year, we have to take action on the administrative portion of the BOC's budget. So, just as we do in our district, we do a budget presentation for the community. They did a budget presentation to the Boards of Education and had a nice dinner before that, and it was a nice opportunity to interact with Board members from other school districts.
And then, prior to the meeting tonight, we had a policy committee meeting.
I can share a little bit, and if you want to add in what I may have left out. We were able to get through the 2000 series for review, and those will be being moved forward. There were a couple different policies that were kind of in limbo, but they were corrected with different terminology, and we did resign one policy, retired, excuse me, retired. And then we're going to be moving on to the 3000 series at our next meeting.
We also finished the quarterly updates from Area 1 that were recommended.
And we circled back on some things that are kind of left, and we're waiting for more information for, like, the foreign travel policy. Those teachers just took students on a trip, and we're waiting for feedback from those, to get input from the teachers involved with that, for that policy review. And also, we put the grading policy off to the next board meeting to look at the results that were submitted by the staff earlier in the year. And was there anything? Oh, and then the, actually, that is all we did. That's right, because you covered the other two that we left. Yep, so that's what we covered. And those policies that we reviewed will be up for first reading at the next meeting.
And then on Saturday, April 2nd, there's a CNYSBA meeting. Joan?
Yeah, I saw you snuck that in there. So, we did have one there Saturday morning. Derek has been doing a lot of DEI work throughout CNYSBA, and he's done some work for the Organization for Syracuse City School District with their new board members and getting them oriented. Our Board President resigned. Our Executive Assistant is leaving. So, we're doing a little bit of reorganizing. So, I did sit with the Executive Assistant to go over stuff, so we're going to try to keep her fitting in while we're finding somebody else, because we have a lot of bigger things coming along in April and May for that organization. So, yeah, we're regrouping, and more to come.
Thanks, Joan. Does anyone have anything else they want to speak to? I know we just finished up the spring break. I'm not sure if there are any events or anything that people attended that were school-related over the vacation.
There was a Code of Conduct Committee prior, or prior to the vacation break last week, and more discussion was brought up about the dress code. And there actually were three different, or three students from that committee from Dergi that spoke, which was great to hear their perspectives. And not much was decided, but actually, there's no meeting tomorrow with an agenda that just went out, so more will come about.
Thanks, Shelley. Anyone else? Okay, some upcoming meetings, events. The DEI Community Event is on Thursday this evening, and you can still sign up for the sessions, I believe, through Wednesday. Thank you. On Monday, April 25th, we have a superintendent visit, or a building visit at Reynolds Elementary School during the daytime, similar to what we just discussed with McNamara. And we also have a work session that evening here at the Transportation Center to discuss some of the next phases of the capital project, what we would want to consider doing. Let's see, the 27th Joint PTA Meeting, Officers Meeting, and then on May 2nd, we have our next Regular Board of Education Meeting with another Facilities Committee Meeting prior to that. The 9th, we have a work session as a board. And then, once we get into May, we have May 10th, meet the candidates night in our public budget hearing. We have a Wellness Committee Meeting on the 12th, another building visit on the 12th over at Ray, and on the 17th, we actually have, we have our budget vote and school board elections. And the 19th, another DEI Committee Meeting. So, it's getting very, very busy. Next up on the agenda, we have the Student Board Report. So, Kaylee?
Thank you. Even with school out for the week, our sports teams have been very busy with games, practices, and even the softball team's trip to Myrtle Beach, and their hard work is paying off with Beville's Boys Lacrosse, Girls Lacrosse, Softball, Baseball, and Boys Tennis undefeated so far. In addition, both track teams start competitions this week. More exciting news is that both the trip to Spain and the trip around Europe happened over break. It was super exciting to come back to school and hear stories about everyone's favorite things, from the flights to the food, to the architecture, and so much more. Vienna was a crowd favorite. Next Tuesday, Baker Student Advisory Council is meeting, and the following Wednesday, there will be an interest meeting for the students interested in and/or applying for next year's Student Ex officio Student Board Member Position. Those applications are available and will be submitted in early May. Junior Prom Tickets are on sale outside of the cafeteria at Baker during lunch periods up until April 29th, with prom being on the 30th. And as one last reminder, as Morgan said, Baker's production of Mary Poppins will be May 6th at 7:00 PM and May 7th at 1:00 PM and 7:00 PM, and tickets are still available online at beagletheater.com.
Wow, you just have a little bit going on. Thank you for the report, Kaylee. Next up on the agenda, we have public participation, and I believe there's one request to speak tonight. Kim?
Sorry.
We have that here. Public comments are welcome. They're limited to three minutes per speaker for a total of up to 30 minutes for all speakers combined. They should not include specific individuals or positions. Unless appropriate, the Board of Education will respond by letter to the individual's comment question. Board members will not engage in conversation or comment during this period. Specific employee or student concerns should be communicated to Superintendent of Schools during regular business hours. If there are more than five individuals speaking on the same issue, please limit the topic to just five speakers of your choice as a group. We're here for all, we are here for our students, and it's expected that everyone speaking tonight will follow these rules, and everyone present will model the behaviors that are expected of the students in this school district. Kim, thank you.
We have one speaker tonight, Marianne Williams, in regards to AP classes.
And may I leave the mask on? Can everybody understand me with it? Thank you. My name is Marianne Williams. My son, Aiden Miller, graduated from Baker High School in 2020, and he's now a sophomore at University at Buffalo. He feels very strongly about the AP classes that he took when he was at Baker and asked me to read a statement on his behalf. During my time in the Baldwinsville Central School District, a key part of my development as both a student and an individual came from the Advanced Placement Classes. Taking several AP classes in high school helped prepare me for college in many ways. The structure of AP courses directly represent a college classroom with workload, expectations, and a higher level of student engagement in whatever topic is being discussed. Without access to AP courses, students will lose valuable preparation for their college futures, something that should not be taken lightly. In addition to aiding students in their college prep inside the classroom, AP classes were a valuable tool to me and my peers as we sought to get accepted in colleges. AP scores look good on high school transcripts and help students once they get into college. Due to my scores, I was not required by my university to take certain classes and was able to get a jumpstart on my required classes. AP classes are among the best resources students have to prepare them for their college lives, and risking the removal of such classes would be foolish. And I'd like to add to that, his AP classes were probably the favorite classes he had, even though they required so much more out of him. And he said to me one time, in his AP classes, he was finally able to learn and discuss why things happened, not just that they had happened. Now, why am I bringing this up? Because our family is aware that there are people in the district who are seeking to challenge the diversity, equity, and inclusion mission, and very frankly, limit certain materials in the college classroom. And when Aiden found out that banning certain materials required by the College Board meant the school system could lose the AP courses, that's when he got mad. And as you heard, he believes very strongly in the AP courses and the importance of them. And on the rest of that, just, I would hate to see this district lose its mission to promote a inclusive and diverse environment for all students, and that all children should be able to be who they are when they're at school, just like when they're at home. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking tonight. Moving on to the next part of the agenda, the Consent Agenda resolved that the Board of Education approved the Consent Agenda pursuant to be attached. Can I have a motion, please? Matt first. Second, Denise. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Passes nine zero. Now move on to the Leadership Report.
Thank you. If I can invite RJ up, please, to give our technology update.
Hi, everybody. A little hoarse. I chose to get sick over the break, so I'm better now, though. So, I won't read every bullet, but I'll kind of give you a general outline of each of the sections on here. We've had a really busy year since we've come back to all in-person instruction. And early on, when we hadn't have all the kids back in the district in so long that our network hadn't been taxed very, very much. When all the kids came back, and we had 5,000 Chromebooks trying to connect, we found out where our weak points were. So, that's the first bullet. One of the things that we did is we upgraded our firepower, which is our Unified Threat Management appliance. It just couldn't handle the volume of traffic in and out, so we just updated to a 10 gig appliance to handle that traffic. The other thing that was causing that issue was the way our network was addressed, we only had one pipeline out to the internet, and there was just too much, too much traffic for that to handle. So, BOC's did discover that and reconfigured our network, and now we have 15 pathways out to the internet, and we don't seem to have the problem that we were having in September, October, which I thought was going to drive Mr. Thompson right over the edge. We're all patched up. There was a pretty significant attack log for shell that everybody had to scramble and get their servers and machines patched up. Took us about a month to get through every, every system, but we're in good shape there until they come out with the next whatever. There's a list of the hardware and software acquisitions, just, that's the bulk of it. Replaced a lot of desktops, added a bunch of Chromebooks to the fleet, which we replaced, we replaced a lot of older ones, and they added some new instructional software to help the teachers and the students out. Technical support hasn't really changed for us, you know, in the past few years. We're still doing the things we usually do, you know, desktop support, Chromebook support, different software support, keeping everything up to date, patched up, and working for the teachers and the kids. We're a little bit ahead of where we usually are in our, in our tickets. This is just from July 1 until now, so we still have a few months left. We'll probably be a little bit over where we usually are as far as our action items, but that's to be expected with, with the increased amount of devices that we have in the district. The big thing, I just skipped right over on the hardware and software, was a huge project that I can't thank Ms. Vial enough for helping me out with, as far as the, getting the funding for it, is we replaced every smart board in the district. There's over 300 of them. I really had no idea how I was going to get that done before I retired. I know the folks on the Technology Committee have been hearing me say that, but it was a real coup to be able to get that done with some of the federal money that we had available to do that. So, we just put our last one in Monday on break, and it's a good feeling, and the teachers are so far pretty positive about them. There's a little bit different, this is what they are right here, is these, these words you see. They're a little bit different than the traditional smart board. There's a little bit of a learning curve, but we're here to support them, and so far, so good. Professional Development, pretty much the same gambit. We're a Google district, so we do a lot of support with Google Classroom and the Google Suite of Education. We've added Seesaw, EdPuzzle, and a bunch of other things. Mostly, it's been the Learning Coaches and the Library Media Specialists that have been helping us support the teachers with that. I'm on a whole bunch of committees that I try to keep on top of everything, and there they are. And as far as our Technology Committee, thank you very much. We met this year five times. The new state ed technology plan for 2022 to '25 was due. We got that done. It was submitted. Today, it was ceremoniously unsubmitted by the state because they told me that I had a decimal point that I had to get rid of in one of the line items, and when I looked, there was no decimal point there. And so, I got ahold of them, and they said, "Well, we don't know why then, but it keeps telling us there's decimal point." So, we'll get that fixed up and resubmitted. I was very happy that it was only one little thing, you know, and it's a 26-page report. There's only one decimal point holding the whole thing up right now. So, anyways, that's enough about that. Any questions? Please, please ask.
Hey, RJ. Thank you. I'm the most probably not technically advanced here, so I just have a quick question. Under technical support, what does it mean by, I understand total tickets must be issues coming in that are sent to you guys? What about total actions and total action hours?
So, every ticket, you know, the problem is explained to us, and then we go in and determine what the problem is, and there may be several steps that we have to take to solve the one problem. So, every time we add any information to the ticket, it adds it up as an action item. And so, we put our time next to it also. So, that's the action hour.
Thank you. How does, how does that compare to previous years?
We're a little bit, we're a little bit ahead of where we usually are, because it's only April, and I'm already at the number that I'm usually at by the end of June. So, but nothing hurts yet.
Thank you.
Yep.
RJ, a couple of questions for you, particularly around, I noticed that there's a bullet here about biweekly cyber awareness tips. Are we seeing an uptick as a district in cyber threats with Russia, Ukraine ongoing right now?
Not yet. And I could pull a separate report on the work that our firepower is doing, but between the firepower, the alien involved, and some other things I won't mention we have, because I don't want to give away the whole deck of cards, but we're catching, we're catching everything right now. And so, some of it, we don't even really see because it's being taken care of, but I don't think yet that we're seeing anything that we're noticing different than other years. Just some background, since the first year, I can't remember what year it was, where they gave the computer-based testing, we have been under denial of service attacks constantly. And, and that's why we have the firepower, because it was just really getting crazy with that.
Okay. Thanks for that. The, one quick follow-up. So, I know, some point last year, we talked about the third-party providers, the eDoktrina is being one of them. Is BOC's or are we as a district going back to our third-party vendors to, to impose any cyber restrictions or anything on them, or is BOC's looking to do anything differently for that? Because I, you know, that was the one area where we talked about student, student identifiable information that could be potentially a threat. So, I don't know if there's any actions being taken there.
Other than the, the contract that we have through BOC's with the third-party vendors, I'm, I don't know what BOC's themselves is doing with them. So, I don't, I can't really answer. I can find out, though, to see if there's any additional measures being taken, but I know I'm working feverishly. I have all the, I have all the contracts for anything that's really sensitive. I probably have 80% of all the stuff we use under contract. A lot of it's just, the company might collect an email, but our students cannot receive an email from outside. So, it's, it's not a huge priority, but I will get to every little one of them. If I can, I'll just turn it off. That's the way to, I'll find out if BOC's is doing anything extra.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for that. Appreciate it.
Hi, RJ.
Hi.
I don't know. Can you hear me? There we go.
Yep.
Just any feedback on the new smart boards from the teachers and staff?
They really love the, the quality of the image.
Yeah.
There's a little bit of, how do you, I used to be able to do this, but I can't figure out how to do that. So, we've actually put together a series of videos that teachers can go to on our website to learn the, you know, the basic we've actually put together a series of videos that teachers can go to on our website to learn the, you know, the basic things to get them through the day. Tomorrow, our learning coaches and library media specialists are going through their third round of training on the software and the firmware that runs these so that they can turn key train to people that need it. So there'll be more training coming up with that.
Thanks. Glad to hear it.
Thank you, RJ.
Thank you very much.
Kim, revenues and fund balance projections, please.
Sure. So we've been providing these to the board on a monthly basis. A whole lot has changed. This is in regards to our current school year, 2122. So when you take a look down here at the bottom, basically we add up, we have a number of those miscellaneous revenues up at the top that provide a very small amount of our revenue coming in. You can see the state aid, the three columns across because it's scrolled up right now. The first column is what we budgeted. The second column is where we are today. And then the third column is where we anticipate being at the end of the year, which are just projections. So, you know, we do the best we can to, to project out. When you take a look down at the bottom, you can see that we are right now trending a little bit ahead of our revenues. And basically what that would do is reduce the amount of either appropriated fund balance or reserves that we would allocate at the end of the year to balance our budget out. Actually, we wouldn't have to use any of it if it ends up coming out the way we're looking at it right now. So the next document that we look at kind of summarizes what does that mean for us? And I know we have an audit committee coming up about a month from now that we will be looking at this and talking about our fund balance management plan that we have in regards to our reserves. What we feel is adequate to have in each reserve. And I'm sure we'll be discussing the capital reserve as we'll be allocating a significant amount out of our current capital reserve when we bring the project to the voters in May with a successful vote, hopefully. So when you take a look at this document, you get down to the bottom, we are projecting that we will be over our 4% at the end of the year. So that is kind of what we had talked about with the grant funds that we had, that that would be a good opportunity to be able to replenish the reserve and/or add to the reserve, which is why we're also taking that additional resolution to the voters to create another capital reserve so we can start planning for the future. And I'm sure our work session next week, we'll talk more about that as well. Any questions?
Yeah. Quick one for me, Kim. So with the federal funds that came in from the American Rescue Act, was there, I'm just trying, I'm looking at, at the reserves that we have here. Is there an opportunity to maybe do better? Or is there, was that factored into how we calculated reserves or there? Were there, are there opportunities to, to, to try and increase the reserves that we have?
So I'm not sure what your question is.
So extra federal money came in to kind of close the gap, right? So the American Rescue Act allocated money to several districts. We had money coming in, which was either used for one of two things, to fill a gap that we already had, or could be a windfall in some instances. Do we have any windfalls from that money that's come in? And is there an opportunity to increase the reserves that we have?
So this projection takes that into account based on what we have. So when we got our grant funds, we put in, we have a three-year plan that we're following that we have behind in a document and a spreadsheet that kind of says this is how we want to spend the money. There were some things that were in general fund that allowed us to create this fund balance. This district has not typically been creating fund balance. The main reason we are creating fund balance is because of those grants. Previous years, if you go back in history and I can do, I've done some memos to show this to the board periodically that previously we were trending that we were hoping for, when you looked at that other sheet, all of those things that are coming in that aren't appropriated fund balance or reserves, I call them like renewable resources, the tax cap, the state aid, those things that come in every year. And really our expenses were very close to that amount. We weren't generating fund balance and we were hoping not to use fund balance. And I do think last year when I did the memo, part of the time that we did have a little bit of an access previously was based on things that had happened, like going from being self-insured to the consortium and there had to be money kept in a reserve for a certain amount of time and those type of things. So to, to your point, we're looking at it strategically. We hope next year we're in a similar place. As RJ mentioned, if we were trying to buy all of these boards out of general fund, we wouldn't be looking at the same scenario. So we're trying to be strategic in how we're, we're doing that. And I think that that's been one of the discussions we've had over and over with the board with trying to plan a capital project and seeing, you know, districts go out with projects that have a very low impact to the taxpayer. And really the way to do that is to create fund balance, to get that money in the reserves, our savings accounts. So then we can allocate that back to those projects when there's a local, when, to reduce the local share to people. If that made sense, I feel like I had a long-winded answer.
Any other questions for Kim? Thanks, Kim. Joe?
So we have for first reading a textbook adoption for AP World History. This text is, is a true textbook series that is approved by the College Board for Advanced Placement Offerings. This will be on the docket for approval at the next board meeting. So I would entertain any questions if you have them.
Question boy tonight. So so I got the text adoption form a little later in the day today. Were there other AP texts that were evaluated as well? Or is this, this one?
So there's a process. They go through a variety and it's a kind of a blind process where we actually have them look at parts of the text. And then from there, they narrow it down to a selection, which this happened to be the final selection. And at that point, then a pending board approval, Renee will work with the vendor to secure, you know, a, a deal with the material itself. And then also they provide materials gratis, for example, teaching resources, et cetera. We try not to give that information to the teachers prior to, because we don't want the extra items to be a swaying factor. Because a lot of times vendors come in and, and they do the showy, showy deal in order to try to sell the product. So yes, there's more than one text that's looked at for every series.
Okay. I, I had some quality time with the text over the last, I don't know, several weeks and just a few, and I'm not being able to compare it to, it's not my job to compare it, but I mean, just just some, some things that I noticed in here that were a little concerning. The celebration of Karl Marx as a, as a philosopher was a little sort of taking me aback a bit is, and how he's portrayed in, in, in history and that several questions came up throughout the book and I won't go into a lot of detail about it, but I'm happy to discuss, but about celebration of socialist mindsets and mentalities and how, and how history was sort of unfolded in, in different different time periods that are here. I found that there are other time periods where we're using non-contextual comparisons to, to times throughout history to, to make a very specific point. But organizations like the Roman Catholic Church being, being portrayed as an organization, not as a religion, is another area that's there. And I think there I think there were some, some liberties in the, the American Industrial Revolution and its, its portrayal at the time that was, I don't know, being a student of history and, and, and spending a lot of time with us in my college days and early professional days, I found that, you know, it probably came a little bit short. So that was just me and my interpretation of it after, after reading a lot of the text. But I appreciate the process and how you're going through it. So thank you.
And we certainly can take that information back to the staff because they do a great job of providing a balanced approach. So that's one perspective that certainly is beneficial for them to hear as they plan on using this text in the classroom.
Joe?
The next item we have is a trip request first reading. It'll appear for final approval at the next meeting. This is for girls crew to participate in the American Championship Regatta, Camden, New Jersey. Again, a traditional event that existed prior to COVID. This is quote unquote like their state championship because there isn't a state championship in New York for crew. Questions?
Just have a quick question, Joe. For who's, who's going with them? Obviously the number of coaches and number of chaperones shows three and three.
Yep.
But the chaperone names, at least one of them is the coach. So they can over, they have overlapping
Correct.
responsibilities.
Yeah. There just has to be essentially one adult for every 10 students and the coach does count.
Alright, thank you.
I believe one of those is an assistant coach, too.
Thanks, Joe. Back to you, President Petronau.
Thank you Superintendent Thompson. Okay, moving on to new business, resolve that the, resolve that the girls crew team travel and participate in the New York State Rowing Championship in Saratoga Springs, New York, May 13th through 14th, 2022 pursuant to be attached. Can I have a motion, please? I'll give it to Jeff. Is that okay, Joan? Jeff? Alright, who's first? Who's second?
Jeff.
Jeff. Oh, Brian. Okay. Jeff first, Brian second. Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Everyone here passes nine zero. Item C, resolve that the marching band travel and participate in the salute to America Independence Parade in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, July 3rd through 5th, 2022 pursuant to be attached. Can I have a motion, please? Tony, Joan first, Tony second? Okay. Any questions? They're challenging me tonight.
I have one question.
Okay.
So when we go through, this is a process question, and we have the number of students per room listed. Does every club have the same process or that? Because I noticed some have two, some have four. Can you just talk a little bit about that?
So what we've communicated to all of the clubs and/or athletic teams is that the expectation based on conversations at the policy committee level and what we're moving forward with is that there's one student per bed. And so depending on the type of room that's purchased, that could be anywhere between two, three. In this case, because they have a, a rollaway or a portable bed that would be utilized. In this case, because of the fact that the cost of the trip would be exorbitant, we did check with legal counsel, I think I mentioned last board meeting. And we've gotten the clearance that if we provide a letter to families saying that, you know, they have the option to select to be in their own space, that we would, you know, essentially cover the district from potential any liabilities with people being in the same bed.
Will we offer that to other, other groups, like other sports teams?
So at this point, I mean, we're saying the expectation is that it's one per, and we haven't had any trip come forward after that. Because when we left the last couple of policy meetings and board discussions, it was that there was going to be one student per bed. And so given the fact that, you know, we were approached by marching band with a cost, we did check with the attorneys. And that's been a change in the practice, given the feedback that we received from them. So there hasn't been any group that's come forward asking. We're still indicating that we prefer there to be one student per bed.
So if, if a group does come forward and say the costs are way too high.
Then we would have to revisit that.
Okay. So then they would probably, they would be given the same.
Yep.
Courtesy of that. Okay.
And just as a footnote to Denise, it's in the attachment is the specific letter that Casey had drawn up. So.
No, my question is just, I want to make sure, like if other groups come forward and say the cost is too high to do that, will we have the same process for that group as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
So just to clarify the policy, is it currently the official policy is one per bed and exceptions are allowed? Or are we violating the policy by doing this?
Well, it's not a, the practice is that there's, it's not a policy.
Okay. I think you used the word policy. So I was just wondering, so we're not saying a official policy?
No, it's not built into the policy because the specifics for the travel are in the regulations anyway.
And I'm good.
But we would have that conversation as needed.
We need to clarify what policy, when we use the word policy, so no one gets confused.
Okay. I have one quick question on that. Since it says there's 100 students attending and it says the chaperones, but then it also says staff to be determined. When, when is that, one of those individuals identified? And I'm sure they go through some type of, I don't want to say, well, nevermind, it's staff. I'm sorry. So they're already.
Yeah. So as I believe I communicated at the last meeting, even the seniors that are not participating, they'll have to be approved as board volunteers. So at some point prior to this trip actually taking off, there will be a list of volunteers that will be approved. In addition to that, they've identified the staff members that are currently approved for the marching band. And there very well could be additional changes to the instructor list, which will be board approved prior to that. And they would be members of that, that list.
Thanks, Joe. I do recall you saying that as you were speaking tonight. Thank you.
It's okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? All in favor? Oppose? Passes nine zero. Item C, resolve that the Board of Education approved the Baltimore Central School District Policy Series 1000, 2000 revised reviewed pursuant to be attached. Can I have a motion, please? Shelley first, second Denise. Any questions or discussion?
I had a question on 10, or 1140, just a clarification. Guessing the intent up to over two. I'm guessing the intent was that a board member can serve three years or less. But the way it's written, it sounds like there could be circumstances that either extend or shorten their term. It doesn't really say. I'm just wondering what the intent was on this one. Yeah, the red is in last week, so they cleared all the red outside to go back and check. But there was a bunch of wording change here. And I'm guessing the intent was to clarify that it could be shorter than three years, right?
That's correct.
If I recall correctly, I think the, the only change was that word typically was added? Maybe?
I don't know.
I believe that's what we added.
We did add typically. I do recall that.
Yeah, that, that was definitely added, but I was just trying to figure out what the intent was. I mean, it's a three-year term unless you either quit or get kicked off the board, right? But I don't know that you need that in policy, but it just, it makes it sound like you can either serve less than three years or more than three years. And there's unseen, unforeseen circumstances that could affect that. So.
Well, people could also resign prior to their three years.
Right. But I don't think we need that in policy.
And they could be re-elected ultimately serving more than three years.
My, my point being, I think it's awkward wording here. That's all. Doesn't really serve much purpose in my opinion.
No, I agree with you, Jeff. It's confusing the way that it's written. So it should be stated in the affirmative as to what the term is and.
Basically you serve a three-year term unless you quit or, but then again, there's those cases where it's a one-year term if you're for less than a one-year term. So I don't know. This just doesn't seem to help.
Well, it could be a health issue, you know, unfortunately.
I know that, but this could also say we could have somebody serve longer than three years because, you know, it doesn't prohibit that, I guess, based on the thing, even though I think law says it, but. My only point is the words in that second paragraph aren't really clear or don't, I think, help.
We could certainly pull that back and revisit.
We can pull that because I can't remember. I remember us having a discussion about those different scenarios that can pop up. And I'm, I'm personally indifferent whether typically is there or not. I can't remember because we did that a while ago.
I just pulled it up. Yep. It, basically what was in that second paragraph is we added the word typically prior to serve in that first sentence. And then we added an entirely new sentence at the end, which says the board and the district recognize there may be unforeseen circumstances that could affect the length of the term. So everything in that first sentence, second paragraph was what was there prior to in board review with the exception of the word typically. So the policy committee wanted to add the second. So the policy committee wanted to add the second sentence to try to help clarify that more because they felt it was confusing at the time is the way that it was written.
Does anybody recall wasn't, weren't we trying to distinguish between portions of another policy? When there's a resignation is to support? Is, I think it was, that was the reason why, to make it more clear, but it's more to do with another policy.
I think Jen's correct and I can't remember and I'm, I have no problem. I think it, Jeff raises a good question and we're unclear as to the specifics, so we need to bring it back again to discuss the detail.
I think, I think.
I don't have my notes with me.
Yeah, I don't have my, my notes on that one, but I'm, I think the, putting the word typically in there was because sometimes for those reasons, given health reasons, people resign, something happens, that's why some people felt typically would fit. So I'm indifferent. Um, I just think that that's the reasoning behind why we went in this direction because we can't say members will serve for three years because sometimes that doesn't happen. So that's, that was the reasoning.
It's coming back. Thank you, Denise.
Yeah, it was just, it was just so adding that word typically means, well, it's typically three years, but sometimes something happens and it could be.
The other thing too is that we have had board members that have been appointed to serve the remainder of a term, so it's not a three-year term. So that was part of the conversation as well.
Rereading it again, Jeff, I, I do see, by, by adding typically, we're kind of like doubly stating it with that last pair, last sentence that we put in. So even if we take typically out, which I don't care one way or the other, we did put that last sentence in there to identify that there are certain issues as to why somebody may not be able to serve their full three years.
We, we could change the language to something along the lines of the term of a elected board member shall be three years.
Unless.
You know, and then that remainder of the board recognizes, you know, or an unless, unless of a recognition that, that recognizes that somebody may be appointed, but they were not an elected board member at that time. But I understand the intent of it, but I, and I understand what Jeff's saying as well, that it may be a little bit hazy.
Technically though, too, there could be an election to fulfill the remainder of a term, which happens to be less than three years as well. I mean, the board has, I believe, three options to consider when somebody resigns from their position. So, I mean, again, that was part of the conversation. The only option you have now is to have this specific one removed and sent back to the policy committee for review based on the conversation today or prove it as is. But it would need, if it goes back, another two readings before any changes were made. If it's not as is, based on the policy somewhere else in this series that you're going to reapprove tonight.
Yeah, I, I think there was enough discussion tonight to know that we're, we all are kind of, it's, some clarity could be used and I don't think pushing it back is going to change a thing we do on the board, so. Might be worth just seeing if we can clean it up a little bit, that's all.
So somebody would have to make a motion to table that one policy. Send it back to the committee.
Should we, should we first see if, should we take a vote on that? How does that work? Should we take a vote to see if we truly want to send it back or just?
Like somebody would make a motion to do it and then if that passes. Okay, well, since I brought it up, I can make a motion to pull this one and send it back for clarification.
Is there a second? The second for Matt? All in favor? Anyone oppose? Passes, I guess nine zero, Joe, so much for that thousand series. We're right back at it. So now we have to go through and do this, but that's noted that that's pulled out. So now we're approving everything that's listed there except for that policy. Okay. So is everyone clear on that? Okay. So, all in favor of the policies minus policy 1140 that's listed there? Now you have a motion? Or do we, do we did that already? No, we did the motions, that's right. All in favor? Oppose? Passes nine zero. Next item resolved that the Board of Education approved bid number 390- athletic equipment and supplies pursuant to the attached. Can I have a motion, please? Tony first? Second Denise, any questions or discussion?
I have a question, um, just the process we're trying to, I don't know Jason or Jen who I addressed this question to. Did Kim? Since this is the first time I'm seeing as a board member, there's obviously things highlighted in yellow, but does that mean every line item has been requested to be purchased? And only the yellow line items are what you've received back in bids by different vendors?
So Tiffany goes through a whole entire process and we do bid. The larger districts in, in our county goes through and does this bid process. So Tiffany goes through and actually requests bids and certain people bid on certain items. We work closely with athletics. And then they're able to buy those things that we're bringing to the board tonight. So there's also a BOSI's bid and we do buy a few things off there, but it doesn't allow you to buy like a special name product that the athletic department typically prefers to have.
Okay. So everything on here is being requested to be purchased and what we're approving?
It's on the bid so that we can purchase it. It has to go through our whole wind cap purchasing process before it's actually being purchased. So these are just items that we have available that we vetted to make sure that we have the best price.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All in favor? Oppose? Passes nine zero. Item E, resolved that the Board of Education approved the award of the 2022 insurance request for proposal for Hayler, Fryer and Coon Incorporated with Utica National Insurance. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Shelley first, Brian second? Oh no, who was? Jeff was? Jeff a second? Okay. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Passes nine zero. Item F, resolved that the Board of Education adopt the Anadaga, Cortland, Madison, BOSI's, OCM BOSI's 2022, 2023 Administrative Budget pursuant to the attached. Can I have a motion, please? Thank you. Tony first, Jeff second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Passes nine zero. Item G, resolved that the Board of Education adopt the resolution casting its vote or votes in the annual election of members of the Board of Educational Services for person or persons indicated on the ballot for election to Board of Cooperative Educational Services pursuant to the attached. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Joan first? Second Jeff? Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Passes nine zero. Item H, resolved that the Board of Education approved the Health and Welfare. We don't, Jason, that's a question he asked if we have to pick who we're voting for. There's just four seats and there's four people on the ballot, right? So we're set, Joan?
Yeah.
That we're, we're approving what's on the document. We did it right?
Yes, we did it right. If you did it wrong, I would have told you.
Yeah, Jason.
Didn't you know that by now?
Let me write along.
Messed up my flow here.
All right. Item H, resolved that the Board of Education approved the Health and Welfare Services Agreement and Costs for the Following School Districts Fulton City School District, Fulton City, Liverpool Central School District, North Syracuse Central School District, Syracuse City, Phoenix Central School District, West Genesee Central School District, Solvay, Cato Meridian Central School District, Marcella Central School District, Weedsport Central School District, ESM Central School District, Hannibal Central School District, Central Square Central District and Oswego City School District pursuant to the attached. Can I have a motion, please? I think that was Matt first and Brian second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Passes nine zero. Item I, resolved that the Board of Education approved the disposal of surplus equipment and instructional materials pursuant to the attached. Can I have a motion, please? Tony first, Denise second. Any questions or discussion?
I have a question. I know. Go ahead, Shaw. I, I don't, do we ever typically receive, like, why books or, in this case, they're books as to why they're being? Thank you, disposed of.
There's an ongoing process based on policy to have library text reviewed and replenished, and so they just, based on circulation, if they're not being you know, utilized by students, they monitor that data and then they purge.
Thank you.
And then there's also any text that's damaged also would be there as well.
Any other questions? All in favor? Oppose? Passes nine zero. We've now moved on to the board roundtable. And I know I sent an email. I don't know if anyone has anything else that they want to share first.
I, I do have one thing and I apologize, I didn't reach out to everyone because it was a question that came just a couple hours before the meeting. And I'm not really sure who I'm asking this of, but it was brought to my attention that different sports teams within the district, some teams have to pay for certain things for as part of a uniform or equipment. So I was just, I didn't know if anybody was hearing any feedback on that or what our process or policy is. Whether it's modified sports, they have to pay for a certain amount, whether it's JV or varsity. Just kind of putting it out there.
So we have, we have Chris Campbell, he has a schedule of, you know, replenishing uniforms for all the teams across the district. There are times when teams' kids want different uniforms, and so a lot of times they work with the booster clubs to have, because either they want something new on a, on a more frequent basis as opposed to others. But he pretty much tries to stick to his schedule. I can't recall how many years it is before they replenish with, with a new, a new look, but it is something that if they choose to, then they try to coordinate with the booster clubs in order to have that happen.
Do modified teams fall under booster clubs?
They would fall under the overall program club, yes, but there are modified uniforms. So if there's a specific, I, I would say if you have, or whoever has a specific question or concern, they should certainly reach out to Chris to get more detailed information because we should have, I mean, we've purchased modified uniforms since I've been here for quite some time, you know, and, and they're not always hand-me-downs. They, they order new uniforms based on that cycle.
It was more of a question about the hat, ball cap. But I can.
Some, some of those things, like they do, you know, try to work with the boosters, I mean, because it's more of a consumable, because they're not, you know, turning it in.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Joe, what about, um, since we're on this topic, what about items like balls or bussing? Is that all under, um, that budget?
It should be under the athletic code of, or budget that Chris presents and all of that would fall similar to, you know, what their coaches request in the bid that you just approved.
So I sent an email to everyone this morning wanting to discuss a topic of the book banning issue and the controversial issues that keeps popping up. And I have some notes here because I want to make sure that I don't forget anything, and then I have some questions I need to ask. I think, well, I don't think, I know that we all clearly know that there's a lot of controversy across the nation right now regarding banning of books in school libraries and classrooms. And we've received a number of emails, some of them over break regarding these topics. And you've all seen my responses to community members explaining the processes, open meetings laws, education laws we need to follow. And sending them to board docs to get our meeting minutes and recordings of our meetings so they understand what's been going on at board meetings and understand actions that we've made. And I've been alarmed with what I sense is a lot of misinformation out there in the community, and if you call and ask each of you questions, three questions before break. Have we banned any books? Have we censored anything? And have we removed any curriculum? And the answer to all those questions from each person was no. So over the break, I was made aware of exactly what we heard about tonight about the potential of schools losing AP courses due to the banning of contents and books. And this article that was out there has been shared throughout the community because people keep asking me about it. So now we have community members that have linked that article to the idea that this board has been banning books and content and restricting information and materials in the classrooms. So my personal feelings are that this assumption out there is leading to a lot of misinformation. And what I don't want to hear just is that woman presented tonight, her student benefited from the AP classes. But there's many students going through the program right now who are relying on that, and I don't want them to have unnecessary stress and fear that they're going to lose that program and opportunity here. So I started thinking about how this possibly happened. And we have made some changes, but I'm thinking that possibly the changes haven't been presented as well from the board as to what's actually occurred in policy and regulation, and maybe we can do a better job communicating it out to the community. So for example, we added a controversial issues policy this year. And the administration added an additional step in the administrative regulations for the book selection process. So my first question is, whenever there's a new policy or a policy or administrative regulation that's been modified, how and when are those changes communicated out to the staff? Is there a process in place for that information to get to our staff members? Oh yeah, and that'd be like, the board would know that internal, like, so when we make changes in the policy and in addition to something like that, that's very significant, how is that communicated and when is that communicated to the staff so they're aware of those changes?
Well, historically, you know, I don't have that knowledge. But what I would suspect is, is that once, once we get the, this policy all the way approved and through, we're going to share that with the, with the, with the, our building leaders and curriculum directors.
And I, when you share that with them, do you guys just give them like the policy or the same thing that the community would see on board docs? Or is there an explanation shared or should the board be developing some document with an explanation as to why things are added or taken out? So there's more clarity amongst the staff. So not only are they getting the policy and the regulations, but is it needed for the board to give an explanation so there's complete understanding as to why changes?
No, no, I, I think that we can, we can articulate that.
And I would say that we do, when we review in our instructional meetings, we review the updated policies and the board meeting minutes and agendas with the instructional team and then the expectation is that at that point the building principals who are working with staff communicate those updates in their staff meetings. I know that Tony, Renee and the other curriculum directors also communicate those changes. For example, when the change was made to the process, that was placed on the website with the form. And then there were a few people that were ultimately going through the process at the time and had to resubmit because of the changes that had occurred between when they started the process and when the process ended for them. Based on when the board approved those changes.
And Renee is in the back nodding her head. Thank you, Renee.
Renee, if, if you can just come up and if that's okay, to come up to the microphones so people at home can hear what you're saying and not guessing.
I was just going to add that we also at New Teacher Orientation review any board policies that would directly impact what they're doing in. any board policies that would directly impact what they're doing in the, in the classroom. So that's all happening. This is Joe said, that's all I was going to add was clarification.
And then is there's department, department meetings, Renee also hosts and Tony hosts district wide departmental meetings. And so when those meetings occur, there's building level department meetings. All of these things become updates during those conversations.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering about the process internally, how that information was disseminated to the staff. So there's two policies, policy eighty three forty, the instructional materials which the textbooks falls under. There was no change in board policy with that. I just want to make sure that the public understands that. The only thing that's been added is that there was another layer added superintendent Thompson, or whoever the superintendent is, is the last person who would sign off on that before it's presented to the board for official action. As for the policy. Am I still there? Thank you. As for policy eighty three thirty, I think that's where there's a lot of, I'd say some anxiety that I've sensed in some meetings that I've attended and some confusion out in the public and why that was actually added. The controversial issue portion of that is the only portion of policy eighty three thirty that was added. And the reason for that was because there's a regulation for us. We had the controversy going on across the country, but we did have a regulation that existed, but we had no policy to make sure that that regulation actually can, is followed through. So it was important to the policy committee to develop a policy on controversial issues for two reasons. One, it shows that the board expects whenever there's a controversial issue to be presented in the classroom that it's done in a way that's impartial. In all perspectives are presented to the students and it's not presented a one sided. And also it's expected that there be a process in place. So if there's a complaint from the community or a student, that there is a process that's consistent for everyone. And that's really important to remember, especially as we're going through times where there is a lot of division nationally in this country. So controversy in our district, it feels like it's new because I'm in this position. And I know a lot of us have been feeling a lot of pressure from community members. But that's not new in Balden still, because I reflect back over the break on my first year on the board. And there was an issue in the district where there's an objection to a presentation given in a health class. And the same thing can, that's happening now could have easily been said then. That the complaint was that they didn't like the perspective that was being presented. They demanded that the content and crew group presenting be banned. The teacher's judgment was clearly being questioned and one can say that there was micromanaging of the classroom going on. I wasn't in the classroom. I don't know if both perspectives were given. But I can tell you that there was no formal review, a decision was made and it's very, very important. So what I personally feel is having this policy in place is it protects the district so we can never be accused favoring one perspective over another. And there's a consistent policy in place for everybody. So right now as board leaders, we need to figure out and find a way because there is a lot of division and there's a lot of misinformation out there. And we're very, very clear when we make these decisions that we're communicating it out effectively. So the community, not just the teachers, it's just that everybody understands. Because right now I'm getting things from a lot of different people and understanding now that there isn't a true understanding as to what the board's been doing. And I don't know if anyone else wants to opine.
I just have a question. So with, with your Friday letters that go out on, or on, on on our website or on our district's social media pages, is there a way to kind of just send a message to people? Because especially about the AP program, the AP program is fine. It's, nothing's affecting that. Is there a message that can go out that's saying no books have been banned? I'm just throwing that out there as an option.
If that's the, if that's how the whole board feels that way, I could, that's an easy thing I could, that could easily be done.
I think it's leaders. It's very important that we communicate effectively and we don't leave things open. I think when people assume things, we go down a really bad path. And this board has worked very hard about being transparent. We've made a lot of changes in this year. And, you know, going back to our, you know, board training when we first get on, we really are supposed to be functioning glass fishbowl. Wherever anyone is, they should know exactly what's going on and why decisions are made. I'm thinking that maybe we're not as effective as we could be explaining the reasons. We are just so mechanical going through with our actions taken. And, you know, as leaders, I'd rather be proactive than reactive because it's getting not nice out there. I mean, we see it in the news every single day, what's going on and the impact it's having on students, on teachers, tearing communities apart. And I don't want to see that happen here.
So one other thing, I know that we follow a specific process during our meetings. But when we have our community coming out to speak and they speak to some of these topics, I know that we're not supposed to comment at that time. What is our process right now for communicating? Because if those people are not still here listening to this portion or different parts of our meetings, what's our process right now to communicate or to comment to those public speakers from our community?
I typically don't reach out to them or I haven't thus far. If there's a question that's being posed, then I certainly would follow up. But I think a lot of, a lot of them have been just statements of late. And I have no problem putting some more clarity to, to, you know, where our stances on, on books.
So in the, and you can bring it up if you want, but in the portion for public speaking, there is a statement, or at least there was, that, you know, somebody will follow up if there are questions or something. So to Denise's point, there is a statement in there about, you know, I think it's somewhere in there at the bottom that we don't, we don't engage, but we will respond via email or something. Correct me if I'm wrong, if that's not in there anymore.
Yeah, I, I actually send a, a letter thanking them for their comments.
So if there's a need for follow up, that would be the process to Denise's point.
Um, so if they have a question, we answer that. But for, for example, tonight, it's a statement, you know, about fears about things that are happening about our AP program and not wanting that program to be jeopardized, which is not happening here. So how do we address that? Because I, I feel like that message is being spread like wildfire right now.
Well, like I said, I can certainly send that out in a parent letter this week.
Great, thank you.
But from what I've heard from the, the AP topic is not, and again, maybe some of us are misreading, maybe I am, but I don't think it's that AP classes are being canceled because books are being banned. I think it's a concern that if the small vocal minority that is coming here to oppose certain books to be either taken out of the classroom or banned. I don't think anybody's that sat there used the term banned, but at least taken out of the classroom. That we, that the district could be, could be impacted by the AP program. So I don't think any of the comments on AP are that books have been banned and that we are losing AP. I think it's the potential. If those things are allowed to happen, the AP classes now, certainly as, you know, the message goes from person to person to person. Not, not only on that side, but on the other side of the topic, things have, so, you know, I caution to Denise's comments. If we respond only to those that are worried about AP, now what about the other side? When they're worried about, you know, these books that are in classrooms, we have to do the same for all sides. So we're not just, just letting the AP folks feel better that we're not canceling AP because we're not banning books. But we would have to do it for all people that are addressing all topics there. And I'd hate that for us just to focus on the one side. Because I don't know that, at least from my read and from my understanding, I don't think people believe we've banned books yet. I think they're concerned that we're considering them because there has been a vocal group that has come here and essentially asked us to. They've asked us not to have them in the classroom anymore. So I think it's just, they hear that, then they want to make sure that their voices are heard on the other side. So that's my view of it. I don't think I've heard anybody say they know we've banned books and there's no longer in the thing. So I think some of it, we just got to make sure we address that. And I think we've been doing that for the last two meetings that we have not banned anything. And nor does anybody, well, I won't speak for anybody, but nor do I plan to ban anything. So I think just getting that message out that, you know, people are sharing their concerns and that we're listening, but at this point, we haven't done any of that. I don't know if we can say that forever, but I'm hoping we don't, but that's my view.
And just to address, so I, I was using tonight as an example. So I'm not saying just to address that. I'm just trying to figure out if we have a process for everybody that comes and speaks to something that, that we can address.
And I agree, Jeff, that that was probably the intent when this started kicking up in the community. But I did respond to an email where a community member, which everyone was copied on, that they're appalled that this is happening in our district. So that message, you know, it's kind of like the game of telephone. It's changing and I, I personally have had community members ask me if this is going on. You know, so I definitely don't want the board to, you know, for people to believe that the board is doing that because we've been very clear that we don't want to ban books. So we need to be really careful and, you know, people need to understand on both sides. You know, it's okay to have opposing views. But it goes down a slippery slope when you start banning books. Because one side may not like something and they want it banned, but they have to understand the same thing can happen on the other end. And they're not going to have a leg to stand on. And it really does come down to, you know, I think the district has done a great job with offering choice. So people have different morals, values and belief systems are not having something, you know, they're having to read things that they may find incredibly offensive. You know, society has changed over time, things that were not acceptable when we were in school are commonplace now. So it is very difficult.
Going back to, I think it was Denise's request to have Jason put something out in the Friday letter to the parents and guardians. Not, I mean, not just the specific current hot topic per se with the AP and the banning of books, but set it forward as a process. So not everybody who come, I mean, not everybody's going to come back, go back and listen to meetings. So just like Jeff had said, you know, it starts here and then they, people talk and, and the information gets a little loose or something gets added, something gets taken out. So not only if, if we're all in agreement for Jason to do that with these couple of different issues, can we also going forward, if there's hot topics like this that we know that people are presenting? And it's absolutely not the case whatsoever to kind of, I don't want to say nip it in the bud, but for Jason to you to address that this is, this is what it is, this is what it isn't type thing. Just so we are clear going forward for whatever else might come about.
I think when we had this talk with, when we got legal advice earlier in the year, when we had a lot of people coming about masking, you know, the recommendation, you, you're, you're not supposed to like answer questions or engage. And I think one of the reasons for that is number one, you don't want it to escalate. But we're nine people who may have nine different opinions and you really can't answer a question because you don't know where your board colleagues may be standing on the issue being presented or, you know, the question being asked. So that's something that we need to consider as well. But I do struggle because I feel I'm very approachable. I've always had people in the community, wherever I am at kids events, asking me questions for years now. And it is tough because you want to be responsive to the people coming. They're taking time to come. They're, they're upset about something and it is a challenge to sit here and not be able to respond. So I understand where, you know, people are coming from with that.
I think we will just have to have a, maybe further discussion as a board about how we're going to go about that. Because the message itself, if we, as we've seen already, when, when Jason sends out a message, the message itself is going to create more controversy. So we need to be able to discuss that. Like you said, Jen, we all have different opinions, but we need to come to a conclusion as a board if we want to do that. And then what that would be. I, I think as a board, in this case, it's pretty clear. We've, we've discussed it. We've made it clear that, you know, nobody here is looking to ban books. You know, not looking to ban books. We're not looking to affect AP, keep that going. We've heard, you know, how great it is for the students and that's phenomenal. I think I took an AP class when I was in high school, it was a long time ago. Getting further and further away, but I think I took one or two. But just that issue going forward, we definitely may want to think about how we're going to develop that, you know, because again, that's going to fall on Jason's shoulders. And he's got broad shoulders, but still we want to, we want to temper it a little bit. So.
And, and I would, somebody, oh, and I would say that we entrust Jason and his communications group and the administrators to address, you know, as you see these topics come up, I'd rather have you guys come up with the messaging than, you know, from us because we're nine people with, you know, you're the one that has to stand in front of it every day and I would rather see that come from there. Because, you know, we addressed banning books, that's one point. And then there's, I mean, if the things we've heard here in the last several months, we could address every single one of them if we wanted to do everything equally. You know, we've had speakers that, you know, speak against our teachers and what they're doing in class. Like, okay, let's get a message out on that. You know, just, I think it's a slippery slope if we start picking one topic and then we pick the next topic and then where do we stop? And if we don't address it, is that because we agree with it or we don't, you know? I just think we let Jason and his staff figure that out. And, you know, if we see issues with it, we address it with them. But I don't want to start telling Jason, we need you to say this and we need you to say that. So my thoughts.
I agree with that, but I also think that one of the problems with this issue was nobody on the board wants to ban books. We know that. Nobody wants to ban books, but we never said that. We never said that until maybe last week, last meeting, sorry. And I think that's the problem. We have to get that out there. If we just say it in a meeting, people will hear it and that'll help. But we do need to address certain things, but we have to, we can't let people build this up and let it go as wild as it's been going and not say anything. And I think that by us just talking about it now, it's, it's probably really helping.
We all sat tonight. I appreciate everyone listening in the conversation because I think it is really important. Because when you feel that tension, we're feeling it, but the people in the community are. Because I think it's all about systems in place, processes in place. That's what we do as a board to help do that through policy. And, you know, when we make changes, communicating that effectively is really important. And that's definitely something that we, as a team can improve upon. I know I certainly will, at least when I'm in this position to make sure that we do that. Especially when we sense in the community that there's a lot of people who are getting upset. Frank?
Not on this topic. So if we're done with this one. Okay. So I shared with Jason earlier tonight, I got a text message from a member of the community who wanted some clarification around voting for in the next board member election. So sort of paraphrase the text that I got and I think I know the answer. That's typically how this works is, and the, and the, and the note reads, just a note for anyone that might not be aware, if you cast only one vote, that person gets three votes. So if you get together with someone else, like your spouse, and one votes for candidate X and the other votes for candidate Y, each would get three votes from the two, the two of you instead of two for each. So just a clarification for, I guess, the general public that one vote is what counts, right? You're not getting additional votes that come out of, out of somewhere. Okay. I thought that was the case in America. Correct.
And I believe it states on the ballot, you can vote up to three choices, right? So it's pretty clear on the ballot that you can vote for up to three candidates, right?
Three spots every year for up to three. That's correct.
Right. So to my knowledge, it's one, if you check the box, it's one vote for that person. It's not three votes for the same person. You can vote for three different people. You can vote for three different people is what my understanding is.
Vote for one, two, or three, it doesn't require you to vote for three, you could certainly vote for one, but it's one vote. Or you could not vote for.
You can vote up to three different people, one for each of the three seats that's open.
And just for, so let's talk some more, I really confuse people.
I got so lost.
On that, on that topic, how many candidates do we have this year?
We, I believe the count is nine, but I actually was not in the DO this afternoon at five o'clock, because I was over here. So I'll confirm tomorrow morning when we pull the ballots for the order.
But ballots were due at five o'clock today.
Correct. So we'll pull them tomorrow for the order that they'll appear on the ballot. So all, all the names will be present at that time.
All right. We resolved that the Board of Education enter an executive session, discuss the employment history of a particular person or corporation. Can I have a motion, please? Frank first, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Five minutes, everyone? All right.